One minute to air. We are now streaming.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, happy Monday. We would like to call the Durham City Council meeting to order for this Monday, April 17, 2023, at 7:00 PM exactly. Here at one-on-one City Hall Plaza, first floor in our council chambers, I'd like you to join me in a moment of silence as we center ourselves for this evening. Thank you. I'll now turn to Councilwoman Deidra Anna Freeman to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand and salute the flag if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to promote the principle which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you will call the robe.
Madam Mayor.
I am present.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Middleton has requested an excused absence for today. Councilmember Caballero.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams.
I am here.
Thank you.
Well, what a time, what a time. The moment has come. I've been waiting for this moment for a couple of weeks now. For the State of the City address. This city that I love so well, my hometown. I'm honored to serve as your mayor. And I'm honored tonight to stand here with you all who have joined us here in chambers and with you all who are watching at home. For me to tell you what my journey has been like and what the city of Durham has been doing since I last addressed you about this time last year. I'm extremely pleased to see all of you tonight. And it brings me joy when I think about all that we have accomplished. We've accomplished so much over the last year. It's impossible to include it all tonight. But I will cover as much ground as possible on where the city of Durham stands on pressing issues and where I hope to have your help to move us forward. First, I want to honor and recognize my council colleagues who served with me and also our city manager, who I'll talk about again, and our city attorney. Thank you all for all of the work that you do for the city of Durham. I want to start with some good news. We could talk about a lot of bad news. But this is a good news time. And it's certainly not all of it. I encourage you to stay up to date and spread the word about the many great things happening in our city. Make sure that you sign up for the bi-weekly newsletter called City Connect, which includes messages from our city manager or view the Bull City Today segments on Spectrum Channel 8 or on the city's YouTube and social media pages. The city has continued to strengthen our partnership with Durham County. I gotta stop and talk about the relationship that I have with our chair of the Durham County Board of Commissioners, Chair Brenda Howerton, who's here with me tonight. She has been a mentor to me in this role. She's been a partner to me on many things on a personal basis. I value though most what she's been able to accomplish with Durham County as their chair. And I look to her for guidance in a lot of things. So I want to publicly say thank you for your friendship, for your sisterhood, for all the things that you do for our county. And I also want to brag that we've been able to partner on a lot of things together. From addressing crime and enhancing public safety to our partnerships on affordable housing and economic and youth development. And be rest assured, that is her board as well. We coordinate well between the two boards. And it's an historic board that she chairs. And so we are grateful that we are sharing this historic time together. So we are working to ensure that whether you have a city or a county address, your leaders, be rest assured that your leaders are coordinating our efforts and our resources to achieve greatest impact. Now, we've all heard about the bipartisan infrastructure law. And through the passing of that law, a once-in-a-generation investment in our country's infrastructure. This city, Durham City, has been awarded over $10 million to support Safe Streets and Roads for All program, our emergency watershed protection program, and hazard mitigation. But we are not stopping there. We are currently investigating 56 other competitive grant opportunities. And we are awaiting decisions on several more applications. Just today, we received great news from Congresswoman Valerie Fuchie's office that the city will, we hope, receive $3 million for the South Side revitalization Phase 3 and Phase 4. This project was chosen because it fills our continued need for affordable housing and demonstrates strong community support. So we're aligned, and if we receive that money, it will come in 2024. Now, let's talk about the surveys that our residents filled out for Durham City about satisfaction with the services that our over 2,000 employees meet out every day. The city of Durham's annual satisfaction survey shows that residents positively perceive the Bull City as an excellent or good place to live and work. 82% feel that Durham is an excellent or good place to live of those who filled out the survey. And 78% felt that Durham is an excellent or good place to work. Now, that's clap worthy right there. Notable increases in satisfaction since the 2021 survey includes the ease of travel by Durham, our yard waste collection services, the condition of our public art, our greenways and our trails, our images of Durham and cultural programming. Our city workers work very, very hard to make sure that these things happen continuously on a daily basis. Let's talk about the Durham Housing Authority. In September, the Durham Housing Authority, and we have Mr. Anthony Scott here, who is the CEO of our Durham Housing Authority. He's been transformative in this role. That's not an easy job that he has. But in September, the Durham Housing Authority and the city of Durham announced to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development that we've been selected to receive $40 million in Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant funding or CNI funding. And if you ride down Main Street, you will see some of that happening now. These funds are going towards the revitalization of Durham's existing 519 East Main Street, the Liberty Street revitalization. We'll be developing multiple other DHA city and county-owned properties in downtown Durham and central city neighborhoods. We're trying to have one Main Street, not the tale of two Main Streets that we have right now. We have also funded shovel-ready affordable housing projects that will bring approximately 400 new units online. These four projects are currently being considered by our partners over in the county. And we are using ARPA monies to do that. And so I believe that the county, we have already committed $10 million, the city, and the county, I believe, has committed $10 million as well. So that's clap worthy right there. And my lead to all tonight. And continuing on on the ARPA money, we've also awarded over $20 million plus to 34 approved projects led by Durham nonprofits and community organizations, which will address safety, stable housing, economic equity, community resiliency, and health and wellness. We have also invested greatly in community and public safety through our community safety department's pilots of new response models for 911 call service and our support of our violent interrupters like Bull City United and the Reformers. And I'll come back and talk to them because some of those people that I saw and introduced to you last year, they are here tonight as well. I also want to mention that I did visit our 911 call center on last week. And we have a new class over there. We have seven new persons who are being trained probably right now to become 911 operators. And that is not an easy job. So we congratulate those new trainees. And we are so thankful for our staff over there who work really, really hard to make sure that when you pick up the phone and dial 911, there is an answer and help is on the way. The work of these individuals, you know, it's often behind the scenes and courageous and pioneering for our violent interrupters, our 911 callers, all of those, our HART team. All of these people work odd hours, sometimes long hours. And so I want to take a moment to ask them to stand. If you are Bull City United, the HART team, if you're the Reformers, please stand if you're in the audience tonight. Stand to be recognized. We are grateful for your service. We are grateful for your service. We've also invested in economic development with small business support for minority-owned or women-owned and underutilized businesses and in strategies like guaranteed income for improving economic equity for vulnerable populations. But North Carolina is getting ready to make, Durham is getting ready to make history again in 2029. 2029. We will host the World University Games that summer. And that was a process that had to be vetted. And people had to go out of town and across the waters and bring it home. Didn't they, Brenda Howerton? But they brought it home. They brought it home. And so in 2029, and I hope that everybody's who's here today will be there in 2029, we will have lots of visitors right here in Durham, in North Carolina Central University, at Duke University, as these games will be held all over Durham. I think Chapel Hill, Greensboro, and just one other place. Brenda said it. And Raleigh. So that's going to bring millions of dollars into our community and millions of visitors to our state and the city. And we hope that they will have a great experience and come back. So we've got some great things happening in Durham. And I'd like just to give a round of applause for all of our city workers who made most of this, a lot of this happen. Well, we are now a city of approximately 350,000 plus. We're racially, ethnically diverse. We are the fourth-largest city in North Carolina and the 71st-largest city in the United States. In case you didn't know, because I didn't know, I just accidentally told you this. Durham covers an area of 107.3 miles, square miles. So that's not a lot, but it is a lot, right? So in your city now, your city maintains over 600 miles of paved roads. The rest of your roads are maintained by the state. But the city of Durham and its workers maintain 600 miles of paved roads. And the infrastructure to support all of these things and these numbers is called Durham City Government. The city is responsible, because I have to tell people, because they like to call and tell us we're responsible for this or we're responsible for that. And I have to kind of tell you, no, not quite. City government can't handle it all, and we're not supposed to. That's the beauty of our democracy. We have several forms of government. But the city is responsible for what we call brick and mortar, right? Your streets, your lights, your sidewalks, our water, and your bus service. Our county partners are responsible for human services that support our residents. And we work very closely with them to ensure that all of our residents receive the support they need. The city of Durham itself has 27 departments and 2,360 full-time employees, 297 part-time employees. Now, the Durham Fire Department, the Police Department, Emergency Communications, Parks and Recreation, Community Safety, Water Management, Solid Waste, Public Works, Office of Economic and Workforce Development, Inspections and Planning. They provide a multitude of direct support to our residents each and every day. Several providing 24-hour response in cases of emergency or crisis. But you know what? You won't see most of the people who work for the city of Durham. It is a 24-hour, 365-day operation. The city never closes. I had to learn it hallway. It never closes. So who are they? Who are these people who dedicate their lives to public service? As public service, guys and as city employees? They're really the lifelines of our city. So first, I have to acknowledge the lady, the heads at all, the operations of our city, the day-to-day operations of our city. The council is a policymaking board. City Manager Paige, she runs the day-to-day operations. And she runs it well. You have our attorney, Attorney Kim Rayberg. She makes sure that we stay within the confines of the law as it regards to operations of the city. And our clerk, Ms. Diana Schreiber, she makes sure that everything that happens, there's a note written about it for the most part. So please give them also a round of applause. And each of our, we only, the city only, the council only has three employees, our clerk, our attorney, and our manager. But under them, there are several layers of people who keep things running in their departments. But to keep the city running, there are four people that stand as deputy city managers. And I'd like to introduce them to some and reintroduce them to others. Mr. Keith Chadwell, Mr. Bo Ferguson. Ms. Bertha Johnson. There's three of them. Mr. Man, there's three. And they have portfolios underneath where they also then have department directors. And they carry out the day-to-day operations of our city. There's one thing that both I and our city leaders know, that none of this works without the other people that show up each day without question and with a spirit of excellence to make sure our residents have reliable city services. City employees get all the stars, every single one of them. And I ask all of our city employees, if you're here tonight, to please stand. Now, the city of Durham is also not bad to work for in case you're looking for a job. We are an outstanding employer. I'm telling you, they have great, did you know that the city is self-insured on its health benefits? Now, how many of y'all working for a company that complain that? But the city has managed to do that. We have great health benefits. It's a great work environment. The opportunities for advancement and impact. Now, I know, a lot of y'all, most of y'all call us when something goes wrong. I get it. But you know, you got people on the other end who love working for the city. And they're able to take your call and make something happen from there. So I want you to consider joining us as a city employee so you can see the results and impact of your work every day. I guarantee you, it is never a dull day, time on this job, working for the city of Durham. Never a dull day. So I'm going to focus the rest of my time on the issues that I believe require our immediate attention to make Durham a great place to live, work, and play for all. And when I became your mayor, that was just not a phrase for me. I had to break that down into workable solutions for me to kind of understand. Live, work, and play. What does that mean? So first, let's talk about living in Durham. Let's talk about that. But I want to ground us in this quote from Martin Luther King. "In 1967, when the world was very different," and I was about five years old, "he issued a call to action for Americans to confront poverty and injustice." Dr. King said, and I quote, "We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today. We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. In this unfolding conundrum of life and history, there is such a thing as being too late. There is no time for apathy or complacency. This is a time for vigorous and positive action." Many of the same challenges that were faced at that time echo today. The urgency of now. So let's talk about living in Durham. First, I have to acknowledge the senseless violence that continues to plague our city and cities all across this great nation. Each person taken away from our community continues to tear holes in the very fabric of who we are. I'm committed, I've been committed, to considering all strategies to address the root causes of violence, including poverty, lack of housing, and economic opportunity for all our residents. I will ask for a moment of silence and reflection for our community members that we lost just as recently as yesterday and over the last year and past years, as well as for their friends and families who must carry on. Thank you for that. I'd also like to announce that a collaborative day of remembrance, which has been organized primarily by school board member Jovanna Lewis. She pulled the three bodies of government together, the city council, the county commissioners, and Durham Public Schools. We will have, what we hope you all will join in, on May 15th at 10:00 AM, a time of silence for those we have lost. And we are calling that the Day of Remembrance. During this event, we will ask our entire community, wherever you are, together with us and our students to mourn the recent acts of violence at Hillside and other schools and to pray for those families directly affected in our school community at large. More information about the event and the location will be forthcoming. In my State of the City address last year, I spoke of two Main Streets. The idea that many of our residents are living very different lives from one another just on Main Street. You can't ignore that inequity. You can see it. It's visible. And our growth and success is also visible. The new office buildings, the new apartments, new restaurants, our new homes, but that's not the entire story. The reality is, is that Durham's prosperity has not been shared equally or equitably across our community. And our most vulnerable populations are feeling the effects the most. And the sad part about it is, this is not new. It didn't just happen last year when Elaine O'Neil became mayor. It just didn't happen in the last five years. It's been going on a long time. So we have to continue to invest in closing these gaps. But your most basic need as a human being is that of shelter, housing. And I believe that ensuring that And I believe that ensuring that all residents have access to safe and affordable housing will have a stabilizing effect across many areas of our society. Now, I participated in January in what they call the Point in Time Count. Never really heard of that. But it's an annual count that goes on all across the United States. And you basically count your unsheltered people experiencing homelessness on that single night. It's completed in January, when it's bitter cold. And so I had the opportunity to go out this year. Now, the Point in Time Count has been rising over the last five years due to the lack of affordable housing units and just not enough supportive services in place to help people remain in housing. The number of people who, from October 2021 through September 2022, over 1,000 people here in Durham entered emergency shelter, transitional housing, or permanent supportive housing. And this year, those numbers are expected to increase. It's something to talk about it, but I got a chance to see it. Next year, when it comes around, take the time to go out. It's an eye-opening experience. It was then that I grasped where we are in terms of what we have to do to make sure that this trend does not continue. Each one of the individuals that I saw that night, each of them all around our city, they deserve our most fervent efforts to prevent homelessness. If Durham wants to become a great place to live for all, we can't allow the trend of increasing homelessness to continue. Homelessness, though, that's not the problem. It's a symptom of the larger societal failures and disinvestment in our people. We have to invest in education, healthcare, jobs, jobs training, as well as affordable housing, and make sure that it's readily available for all income levels. That's our responsibility, and that's the road ahead. I'm proud of our relationships that I mentioned with the housing providers and partners, you know, as they endeavor to transform and reimagine our public housing sites in and around downtown Durham. You know, you have the new construction of the Willow Street Apartments. We just had a grand opening for the Joyce. The total rehab and redevelopment of the J.J. Henderson, Elizabeth Street, Pharisee Heights, other sites, you know, and those housing, they are high-quality, affordable, and mixed-income housing that help to keep long-term Durham residents in our central city. But it's not enough. It's not enough. As a council, you know, we spent much of the last year diving deep into a kind of comprehensive review of housing issues in our city. What I call a deep dive in the housing, so we could get the lay of the land of housing in Durham. So we have had an analysis of, you know, city demographics, the current housing market, which includes affordability, development processes, infrastructure, a comprehensive understanding of community needs. If you haven't had an opportunity to do so, go back and look at some of those sessions of our work session. We're about finishing up now, and we're gonna have that conclusion in a couple of weeks. But at the end of that, we hope to have a document that will help to guide the councils, how we approach housing in Durham. But more importantly, to have some type of document that gives us a point in time as to where we stand in the city, so that when you come on as a newly-elected person or you're coming into the city, working in those departments, you'll have something that can help you get up to speed. It was really hard for me to figure out housing in Durham. And it still remains very complex, but it is incumbent upon all of us, if we are to do something, that we know what we're dealing with and how we approach it. And it takes all of us to do that. So we've tried to help to educate ourselves as well as you all. Now, I have charged leaders from just about every sector in this city, every time I get a chance to talk, to address one of the most difficult challenges not only facing our city, but cities all across America. And that's housing of folks who have been involved in our justice system. Believe it or not, though, the barriers that they face are very similar to barriers that are faced by our elderly population, as well as our neighbors who have disabilities. They look very much alike in the barriers that are out there in terms of housing. So we have had some of the Ivy League folk to come in, along with Michael Bloomberg, who started a Cedar Leadership Initiative for Mayors. We are a legacy city. I am the second mayor. Mayor Steve Shue was the first to be involved in that. And normally, you're supposed to kind of do sort of a program or a project. Well, that's not what Durham is taking a look at. We are doing the harder work, the why and the how. And so we have been selected to participate in the seven-month innovation track to take a critical look at the barriers to safe and affordable housing experienced by justice-involved individuals. Through this program, this team of 12, if you see them, and some of them are here tonight, I'm gonna ask them to stand in a second. They have been spending hours per week. They had to have a commitment. We had to have a commitment from these folk that they would take about 12, 12, I think it's five hours a week, five hours a week over this seven-month period to delve deep into this issue. So they spend time talking with residents, with lived experiences. They're talking to landlords, and they're talking to service providers so we can co-create solutions that could address this serious community challenge. I'd ask those people, those persons, those she-ros and heroes who are part of that initiative, to stand so that folk can see you. On that team from the city, I have to thank Ms. Amber Wade and Chief of Staff Carl Misha Wallace, who have been leading that charge. They've put in a lot of time. All of these folk put in a lot of time in trying to wrestle and confront and deal with head-on one of the most pressing issues that we have in our nation, not just in Durham City, but we have chosen to tackle it. So we are hoping to have some opportunity before the end of the year to come back and tell you what they're gonna be asking not only the city to do, the county to do, but for all of Durham citizens to do. So we're working on housing. Now, let's look at the next block, which is work. Everybody needs to be able to sustain their lifestyle. And not everybody needs a $500,000 house. Not everybody needs a job that pays a half million dollars either. Some of us do very well, but we need to have an opportunity to work. So that's the mechanism by which our residents sustain housing, our mode of transportation, it supports the basic needs of your families. So we have to make it important that we, the city, continues to devote resources into both increasing the number of family-sustaining jobs and into the training and skill development of our workforce. We must think critically about operalization, I can't even say it. We have to think critically about how we have a responsive workforce development system that connects our youth, our unemployed, our dislocated, our underemployed residents to employees. There has to be a system in that block to make those things happen. And let's talk about Youth Works. Tell you a little bit that's going on with our young people. This year, 863 young people expressed an interest in participating in our Durham Youth Works program. We're excited to report that 729 of those youth have enrolled. I started as a child as a city employee, working for Durham City. This trend continues. So this work continues to be transformative for our youth in our city. But the city can't do this alone. No way. We have about 17,000-plus young people in Durham Public Schools, in middle and high school. So you see what the numbers look like. We can't hire all of our kids who need an opportunity. But I am honored to announce that Duke University, through its Office of Durham and Community Affairs, has agreed to a historic and generous partnership with our Youth Work programs. And now, I'm asking each of you, especially in our business community, to do the same. Over 700 youth have stepped up and spoken. They are not asking for a handout. They're asking for a handup. Our Youth Works team will equip these aspiring young people with the essential work readiness skills they need to ensure their workplace success. So I implore our business community to rise to the challenge to hire, host, and contribute to this movement. Business partners, these bright lights represent your future and our future workforce. Please, this summer, summer's coming, give them the opportunity to realize their career goals. And you too will reap the benefits of a skilled talent pipeline that guarantees our success. Engage. So go to that little website y'all see, durhamyouthworks.com, and help us out. I was talking to our city manager the other day. She indicated that she wanted to double our numbers for the summer, which will put us at about 1,000. But you heard the 17,000, that's in the age range. So we're gonna do our part, but we're asking you all to do, to help us as well. Now, our Workforce Development Division also continues, and our workforce representatives are here tonight. They continue to work to align the employment needs of our local businesses with the entire Durham talent pipeline. Even those facing enormous challenges and barriers to employment, through work-based learning, training, and skill-building, we continue to build the capacity of our workforce. Our NC Works Career Center offers support to both employers and those seeking employment having provided, get this, 11,318 services to employers and 35,756 services to job seekers to date. And that is a small department. That's a lot of numbers. So we thank, we thank the NC Works Career Center for all that they're doing. The City of Durham, in partnership with the Durham Workforce Development Board, continues to foster inter-agency and inter-local partnerships that successfully build the employability of our workforce, especially those in our most vulnerable population, such as those facing disabilities, veterans in our justice-involved community. We have to ensure equitable and shared prosperity to all of our Durham citizens. And so this is a key priority for this administration. Likewise, Durham Small Business and Small Business Owner Ecosystem is essential to our local economy. These businesses and owners create local jobs, give back to our local community, cultivate innovation and growth, and contribute to a unified and welcoming community identity. Providing technical assistance to local businesses in our community is critical to our community's success. And since early 2022, OEWD has worked with Triangle Art Works to implement three cohort-style technical assistance programs focused on teaching independent, early-career artists how to make a profitable business from their craft. We will also have, we hope, very soon, the Regional Director for the Southern Region for the SBA Administration, who will come to Durham for a town hall. And we will be partnering with several of our businesses to make that a two-day event, we hope, with him being here and letting us know where our federal government can help our Small Business Administration, where our federal government, through its SBA Administration, can help our small businesses. So stay tuned for that. We've also implemented our first-ever technical assistance program targeted to the Hispanic-Latino community. Upon the conclusion of this pilot program, we received a set of detailed recommendations that will guide our engagement with the Hispanic-Latino business community moving forward. This year, we also launched our Micro Enterprise Business Development Program. This technical assistance program facilitated by local experts included a finance and accounting skills course. Participants who completed the program had an opportunity to apply for direct grant funding for their businesses. The Durham Small Business Opportunity Loan Fund, a partnership effort with Durham County and Carolina Small Business Development Fund, we continue to provide financial support to local firms. This year, we reached a milestone of $1 million in lending, lending distribution to Durham small businesses. The city has enthusiastically championed Durham's many diverse businesses, business owners, and contractors by supporting, sponsoring, and attending community partner events such as Techstars Startup Weekend, the Black Business Week, the Hispanic Contractors Association Annual Brilliance Awards Gala, and many more. We also know that after work, it's time to play. Time to play. We all know the importance of having convenient and high-quality places for our residents, particularly for our youth to play. Reinvesting in our neighborhoods through the addition of facilities and recreational activities has been an emphasis this year. Durham Parks and Recreation has dedicated $48 million to build new parks or renovate existing parks in East Durham over the last five years. This includes the redevelopment of the former Wheels Fun Park site to include a skating rink and an adjacent outdoor aquatics facility. Last month, just a few weeks ago, we celebrated the opening of the Durham Bulls Miracle League in downtown Durham. It's a beautiful day. The new Miracle League field celebrates Durham's value of inclusivity by creating a space where youth and adults by creating a space where youth and adults and special needs, with special needs can fully enjoy playing baseball and other recreational activities. And I got a chance to witness that. It was a beautiful thing. It is also conveniently close to J.J. Henderson. That was brilliant how they planned that. And the Joyce, which will allow the seniors to be interactive in that space. Right? So they have a place to get exercise and stay healthy and watch our young people and our neighbors out there doing their thing on the baseball field. That was brilliant. That idea was brilliant. I wish I could take credit for that, but I can't. It was already diverse. So under Durham, much of our, um, much of our ability to live, work, and play is also transportation. You gotta have transportation. So you have to have an equitable and a convenient system of transportation to, to give us, get us to schools, jobs, recreation, healthcare, many other crucial components of life. You can't play with other people outside of your neighborhood if you don't have a way to get there. You can't visit some of these parks if you don't have a way to get there. And so we know that for many Durham residents, we know that transportation is a barrier to, to accessing employment, education, healthcare, basic needs such as the grocery store, going to the grocery store. Our transit system is a critical tool to connect our underserved residents with these opportunities. We know that among our Go Durham riders, more than eighty percent are people of color. More than seventy percent have incomes below twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And more than two-thirds live in households without access to a car. For the last three years, we've made transit fare-free, making it simple and convenient, we hope, for riders while saving money. The money is, is costly, everything else keeps going up. As we enter deliberations on our next year's budget, I am prepared to support a continuation of fare-free service. We also know that, you know, some of our residents need specialized transportation assistance. And one example of how we're trying to meet those needs is the Go Durham Access Senior Shuttle. This shuttle provides scheduled service from Durham Housing Authority senior communities such as Price Steel, Place J.J. Henderson, to local grocery stores. And in 2022, this initiative provided more than twenty-seven hundred free trips to make it easy for seniors to get fresh food so they can stay healthy and active. As I was preparing for today, and I'm getting ready to close in a few minutes, I remembered several comments made by Coach K as the city council honored him upon his retirement and Coach Trey Oliver of NCCU's National Championship Team. As we honored the team and Coach K during some recent council meetings, both successful coaches spoke about the value of their teams of student athletes coming together with one vision to achieve a successful outcome. Being a successful city is not unlike a team coming together to win a championship. I believe when we all work together, when we all work together in the same direction, staying focused, greatness will follow. Last year, I asked you to volunteer for five hours. For those of you who responded to my call for action, thank you. If you haven't, please consider the urgency is now. Now is the time to pitch in. Being of service to our community is essential for Durham to continue to grow. April is National Volunteer Month, and it is urgent that we act now to ensure there's opportunity for equity, growth, and safety for all Durham residents. Each month, I've tried to present and have presented a proclamation for a specific virtue. These virtues are reminders of the values that as a community and as individuals, we need to embrace to make our city a beacon to all: kindness, patience, grace, thankfulness, gratefulness, courage, fortitude, and this month, peace. Working together on one accord is how we address the urgency of now. Those are my scripted comments. But I do want to end with a few personal comments. As I've thought about over the last year of my life, I've always been committed to try to make sure that the experience I've had in this great city is not a unique one. It is due to each and every one of our children, that they can grow up in this, in this city, they can be educated in this city, and then they can turn around and serve their city. And I've tried to do that. But I'm not the only one. And I introduced you last year to some young men that we have called the Reformers. But there are some others who stand with them and who have stood with them. And I'd just like to give you an update because there have been a lot of volunteers who have worked behind the scenes. And some of them are very familiar to you. They left their government positions, and they became volunteers. One is one of my very great sister friends, Chief Judge at that time, and still is my chief, Pat Evans. Serving on the city council for a number of years, who's still out there volunteering, former councilwoman Jackie Wastel. Still volunteering. Lisa Jones, who was a federal, a federal woman, who's also the sister of Dr. Henry McCorv, relocated to Durham, North Carolina, and got to work immediately with our former police chief, Steve Chalmers. You've probably heard it, and if you haven't, it's called "Justice Reborn." And they say it's not a move, it's not a program, it's a movement. But it's been a movement that's been surrounding all of these men. And Tamla, I'm not gonna forget you, who also works for the city, who's been volunteering. Her time. Stand up, young lady. Working in the county. But I wanna, I wanna, I wanna let you know that where there's a will and there's a way. And we've always gotta have hope. I don't care, and it, hope outlasts generations. There are a couple of things that we know outlast people who sit and seize. Racism will outlast. Just continues on. All kinds of isms outlast. But hope is the sustainer, and it gives us the ability to understand that we can transcend all of those things when you have committed volunteers and folk who are willing to change their lives when they've been given an opportunity. So I want you to see these young men that you saw last year. Mr. Dennis Garrett, who, who runs Love and Respect. And all of the young men that I call our reformers. Stand up, y'all. Let me tell you a little bit about what Judge Evans told everybody. Nobody has gotten a new charge. Nobody. We've had some, some landlords who have stepped forward and who have given them an opportunity to have a place to stay and rent. They have been out in the community at night, working, using the money that they have to put back in the community. They do it while we're sleeping. When I look at them, first of all, I have to say I know there's a God. I have to say that. But I know that hope rings true. They have changed their lives, and they wanted to, and they have. And they are helping each and every day other young people change their lives. So that's why I'm here as your mayor. That's why I decided to run for this office, to let you know that we all, given an opportunity, can really make this the city where all of our residents live, work, and play well together. I encourage you all to let's not let anyone else's child have to die on the streets of Durham, North Carolina. I got a call yesterday, I'm in church, and it was one of my sister-in-laws. I said, "I gotta call you back." I'm in church. Call me when you get out. She said, the young lady's name, it was a family member. The father of her two kids have been killed in the apartment in front of the kids. And they were all shaken as we all were. But that's not the first time for my family. That's like the third time for my family. We have to figure out why our young people are killing each other. And we're gonna have to take ownership of that. You cannot be afraid of the streets of Durham. We are not miracle workers. All of us up here, especially the elected officials, this is a part-time job by state statute, part-time. I guarantee you that each of us put in full-time hours plus on this job. So we're doing our volunteer hours. I would never ask you to do something that I wouldn't be willing to do or haven't done. But you all have to help us. The numbers don't add up. We have three hundred and fifty-five thousand, approximately, Durham citizens. We have twenty-five hundred city employees. You cannot expect your governments to do it all. And a lot of times, we are reacting to an incident. It has to come from our neighbors and from within the communities. So I encourage you tonight to think about how you are going to help make these streets of Durham safe for all of us to live, work, and play. We'll sit strong, everybody. We have to have a meeting. We're gonna take five minutes, and we'll be ready to do it. Let's take a five-minute break, y'all. We'll be ready to get to the people's business. We'll be ready to get to the people's business.
and working toward our ambitious climate goals. In this latest example, our general services team partnered with Thomas Concrete, Carbon Cure, and Skanska to pilot innovative carbon removal technology. The Carbon Cure concrete used in our recent sidewalk project at the Durham Bulls Athletic Park is just as durable and strong and costs about the same as ordinary concrete, but with a lower carbon footprint. That's because Carbon Cure captures carbon emissions from industrial uses before those emissions are released into the atmosphere. The CO2 is then mixed into concrete where it mineralizes, trapping it in the sidewalk forever. We are one of the first cities in North Carolina to use it. If the new sidewalk performs as well as it has in other locations throughout the country, we'll use it for more projects.
Everyone in Durham should be able to find a home they can afford. That's why Forever Home Durham is creating affordable, livable, and inclusive communities for low-to-middle-income residents. From renting to owning, find out how the city is helping more people find homes right here in Durham. Learn more at foreverhomedurham.com.
Tell me what is so exciting about being a firefighter. What do you like?
Uh, well, I love it. So it's the family, I'm a big family person, so it's the family atmosphere that you get in the firehouse, especially, it's from day one. It takes a little bit to get accepted, if you will, but I mean, you have to earn your way, earn your spot, so to speak, but once you've kind of proven yourself, then you can depend on these people, these men and women, to have your back. And it's very team-oriented, so anyone who's grown up playing sports, I think they thrive in this atmosphere. And it's the calls, it's the people that, it's not always the big calls, or, you know, the fires or the EMS calls, it's the simple, you know, you're driving back from the grocery store or wherever, and there's kids on the street, and they just wave at you, and they want you to honk the horn, and stuff like that that makes you smile, it makes you happy.
We, the people.
Nosotros, de gente.
Women, renmin.
Mi adumavio.
Hum, sablog. We, the people, hold these truths.
To be self-evident that all men
and women
are created equal
and shall be afforded
the inalienable right
to fair housing.
The city of Durham and HUD are committed to ensuring that everyone is treated equitably when searching for a place to call home.
We done been gone five minutes, ain't we? All right, everybody. There you go, right there. And our baby's in there. My mic ain't on. We gotta get... Hey, baby.
You know how to find me. You know how to find me. You can sit right in my office. I don't have a car down here. You know I don't walk.
Hello? All right, everybody. We're going to resume the people's business. My mic is not working, it seems like. Hello? Okay. All right, we are now back in session, everybody. Thank you all for coming tonight, but we will continue on, and I am now turning our attention to announcements by council, and we will start with Councilwoman Caballero, and I will turn to you at this time. Trying to give everybody a chance to exit. All right. If you all could close that door for us, thank you. We're gonna try to get out of here before midnight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I am flying out to Tucson for a family emergency on Wednesday, and I am requesting excused absences for the following meetings. Thursday, Thursday's work session on April 20th, council's meeting on May 1st, council's work session on May 4th, council's council meeting on May 15th, and council's work session on May 18th.
All right, and is there a motion?
So moved.
Take it.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Freeman and seconded by Councilwoman, Councilman Williams. All those in favor, would you sign by just saying aye? Aye. All those opposed, have a saying, right, hearing none? Your absences are excused, and we wish you safe travels as you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are there any other announcements on this end? Councilwoman Freeman? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to appreciate the state of the city and just say that you know that I'm here in support and know that we've got a lot of work ahead of us. I did want to just take a moment and share that next week I'll be in Concord for the National, not the National, the North Carolina League of Municipalities Women and Municipal Governments Annual Meeting, and in hopes, I'm sharing today, in hopes of kind of building some support around the National Womenage Meeting being in Charlotte in August. And so the National League of Cities Women and Municipal Government will have thousands of women from across the country who are serving on councils or working in municipal government, coming to Charlotte, North Carolina, and we want to support our national president who is here in North Carolina, August the 9th through the 11th. And so I'll be reaching out to folks, trying to make sure that we line up enough sponsorships, including city support for that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Freeman. I'll turn to my left now, see if there are any announcements. Councilwoman Jose Hama.
Yes, good evening to my colleagues, to the residents of Durham. I also, too, want to share the sentiment with Councilwoman Freeman. I thank the mayor for her address tonight, to be able to kind of look at the things that we need to work for in within Durham, and I just, it's just a pleasure to serve with someone who's a visionary, transformational leader. And I, too, would like to just say that I am with you in your support of us trying to just have Durham be a place where we can work, play, and get things done. So I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Any other announcements? Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations on your second state of the city. I personally appreciate the way you break it down. Government is very, very complicated to follow, and I thank you for breaking it down so everyone can really understand and then provide a vision on a way forward, and tying it to our principles of being able to live, work, and play. So thank you for that. I, like all of you, got the email from Councilmember Caballero, and that, I think that was sort of the tip of the iceberg, well, not tip of the iceberg, but the tipping point for me to, as I've been wrestling with this whole SCAD thing, paying close attention in the community, listening to proponents and opponents, and this is probably gonna make everybody else upset as well, but I am going to ask that we hold off on this document until we can have everybody here after talking to staff, and they needed more time to work with both sides of this argument, talking to both sides, and it's still just unsettled. Personally, I'm ready to go, but after spending some time on it, if everybody's not ready to address this, then I don't think we should go for it yet. So I would prefer that we, as the presidents that we sat, we wait until everyone is here. Just wanted to put that out there, and I don't know how we move forward with it, but...
Thank you, Councilman Williams is here. Okay.
One more thing, and I'm going with Councilmember Freeman next week. I'm not a woman, and I'm not gonna sit in the meetings with them, but I look forward to supporting what she's trying to do and bringing all of that business to North Carolina, and hopefully, you know, we'll get a bigger convention center one day and be able to host it here in Durham. So I got you back. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your kind remarks about the state of the city tonight, and it is incumbent that we all try to move forward and work together. I did want to mention that Mr. Chavis, and thank him for hosting a meeting on Saturday at Holton, PAC 2, I believe, PAC 1 hosted that meeting on Saturday. There, it will be a part two to that meeting concerning SCAD, and that will be on this Saturday from 10:00 to 12:00 a.m. at the same place, at Holton. So we ask you all to please come out and participate in these conversations. With that being said, I think Councilman Williams, the SCAD vote is not coming before the council, I believe, until May 1st. So are you asking that it be put off from there? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, since, Councilmember Caballero, you did request May 1st off, right, as well? So we're not gonna have a full council. But more so for me, after just talking to staff and trying to really make a product out of this big policy between, you know, folks in the community that are for and against, and staff is asking for that time, and, you know, I didn't attend the Saturday meeting, but I did hear about it, there's a lot of contention in this, in this discussion, and I think it's, it's, it's up to us to do the due diligence to make sure we can have a sound conversation around it, so.
Thank you. I was at part of that meeting as well on Saturday, and I do believe that on this Saturday, they have asked the city to come back, our planning department will not, and they are neutral, but they will come in to explain the document that they have provided to us in terms of doing that analysis. I, too, have heard folks who, I've heard two, because one is that we put it off until the UDO is actually passed and then come back and do it, and I've also heard the requests from a lot of community members that we not take it up on May 1st. I'm looking to attorney to see how do we consider it now? I do, I do think it is incumbent for all seven of us to be here whenever we hear it. And so going today, since we know that Councilwoman Caballero will not be here, could we go ahead and address that matter today in terms of a date for us to come back to it, since she will not be here on May 1st?
I mean, Madam Mayor, I assume that it's already been published, but, and Planning Director Sarah Young's gonna join us. But sure, I mean, if the council, if the will of the council is to postpone the hearing to a later date, you can certainly do that and republish it. I would have to defer to the administration on what would be good timing for that.
Ms. Young?
Good evening, Mayor. I would say that, looking at y'all's schedule, if you did want to postpone it, and we could certainly, you don't have to continue it, it could be referred back to staff, and we would just re-advertise from scratch. Given the cases that we have lined up for the few remaining council meetings before the break, I would say that if you all wanted to postpone it, it should happen, it should come back after the summer break. That would be my recommendation to you all.
All right, and now is appropriate time to consider a motion for to refer it back to council?
So moved.
Take it.
All right, and we'll do this by clicker vote. It's been moved by...
Sorry, you mean back to staff.
Refer it back to staff. It's moved by Councilwoman Freeman, seconded by Councilman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote to refer it back to staff. If you will now close the vote and report out, please. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we'll now move to our priority items from our city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. Could we have any? Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Durham City Council. The city manager's office has no priority items this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Manager Page. Turn now to Attorney Rayburg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The city attorney's office also has no priority items.
Thank you, Attorney Rayburg. I turn to our city clerk, Anna Schreiber.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The city clerk's office has no items this evening.
Well, thank you. You all made that quite easy. All right, we now turn to our consent agenda, which is our next order of business, excuse me. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on the consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member or a member of the public, and those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. And I am now going to read through our entire agenda, beginning with item number one, which is the Durham City County Environmental Affairs Board appointment. Two, mayor's Hispanic-Latino committee appointment. Number three, Durham Workers Rights Commission appointment. Item four, Human Relations Commission appointment. Number five is the Durham Convention Center Authority appointment. Item six, Durham Planning Commission appointment.
Madam Mayor, I would like to have that item pulled.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to have that item pulled.
Item seven is the Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority mayor appointment. Item eight is the mayor's council for women appointment. Item nine is a resolution to support designation of temporary protected status for Guatemalians.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull that.
You're pulling that? Item 10 is the Durham City County Appearance Commission inter-local agreement renewal. Eleven, a resolution authorizing the virtual city auction. Item 12, contract for cultural roadmap development with AMS Planning and Research. Number 13, the Second Amendment to the Professional Services Contract with Timmins Group, Inc. for the East Club Boulevard Sidewalk Project. Fourteen, construction services contract with SA Halling and Utilities LLC for the Sidewalk Gaps 3 Project. Item 15, construction services contract with Chatham Civil Contracting LLC for the Beechwood Cemetery Expansion Project, sorry. Item 16, ordinance amending Durham City Code Section 70-687 and adding Section 70-691 Private Drainage Assistance hardship program. Item 17, municipal agreement with NC DOT for bike lane vertical protection, TIP number Eighteen, it's a contract amendment to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with Hazen and Sawyer PC for the East Durham Water and Sewer Rehabilitation and Belt Street Regional Stormwater Improvements Project Phase 1B. Item 19...
Madam Mayor, I didn't want to pull it, but I did want to note that that is in my
Which is the award of B-term contract for bulk aluminum sulfide to CNS Chemicals. Item 20 is the Ward of Service Contract to Tri-Aerial Landworks Limited Limited Liability Company for the grounds maintenance services for sanitary sewer lift stations and various remote water sites project. Item 25 is the contract amendment number three to the Professional Engineering Services Contract with Kemley Horn and Associates, Inc. for the Lakewood Avenue Sewer and NC-54 waterline replacements. Turning now to our general business agenda, this item 21 is the consolidated annexation for 4501 Glen Road. We have one person here to speak on that. She'll be pulled, item 21. And we have one person online as well to speak on that, so we'll pull the item. Item 22 is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment, improving access and walkability. Item 23 is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment regarding pit waste receptacles. And the last item, 24, is the revisions to the Durham City Code Section 70-7, 36 through 7, 70-744 Stormwater Performance Standards for Development. And I would now like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Take it. It's been moved by Councilman Williams, and let's see, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you which ones we pulled, 69 and 21, correct? 21 is a public hearing, 69, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, so it has been moved by Councilman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Caballero. Madam Clerk, if you will... Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The eyes have it, and the consent agenda is approved. We now turn to our public hearings.
Madam Mayor, when a privilege, I would, if possible, like to do the resolution since we do have community members.
Yes, we do. You may.
Thank you.
So we'll, actually, we will start with item number nine. Councilwoman Caballero, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I would like to first just say that this is a national campaign across the U.S. Carboro Town Council has already passed their resolution. I think that they pass it tomorrow. Thank you. And I think the City of Raleigh is also considering passing a resolution similar to this, and the idea is to get communities across the United States to pass resolutions in support of our Guatemalan neighbors so that they can get TPS status, temporary protective status, and it's to elevate the issue for the Biden administration. So at this time, I would like to invite the community members up who are here to go ahead and come up to the microphone. And the, the folks who are here, I'm pleased to say that we have the Guatemalan Council, Jorge Archila Ruiz here, and also the Asociación de Guatemaltecos Unidos en N.C. And they will be reading the resolution both in Spanish and English, and then I think, if possible, getting a picture with council. And I just want to thank Yud Montenegro and Yanita from Alancias América for bringing this to the City of Durham.
Buenas tardes, alcalde, and to all of his team. My name is Eliezar Cifuentes, President of the Asociación de Guatemaltecos Unidos de Carolina del Norte, and, of course, I had to read in Spanish the resolution, saying, "to support the designation of a temporary protection status for people in Guatemala." Considering that Durham City is committed and maintains a long historical support for celebration and empowerment of immigrants and refugees, many of whom are fleeing from the war and natural disasters without compromising their status of immigration. Considering that the status of temporary TPS for its centuries in English was created in 1990 as a form of status of migration and an administrative authority used by the executive branch to provide employment and protection to deportees from countries where they cannot return safely to their home countries. And considering that since 1991, the United States has granted the status of temporary protection status to foreign persons from Afghanistan, Virmania, Cameroon, El Salvador, Honduras, Haiti, Nepal, Nicaragua, Syria, Sudan, Somalia, Sudan of the South, Yemen, Venezuela, and Ukraine, and has renovated its status of protection every 18 months. Since then, Guatemala has not been designated for the status of temporary protection status and considering that Guatemaltecos are the sixth largest Hispanic group in the United States and the second largest Latin American population after Salvadorans, Guatemalans are vulnerable to protection every 18 months. Considering that Guatemala has been a family and potentially a country that has been a strong economic stronghold in our country, Carolina del Norte is the home of over 18,000 Guatemaltecos and considering that it is still dangerous for Guatemalans to return to their country due to the persistent damage and labor needed for reconstruction caused by the hurricanes of 2020, violence based in gender, criminal, discrimination, and displacement of Guatemalans, whites, and indigenous, and considering that in view of the increasing anti-immigration policies of the United States, such as the 287-G, and that there is no hope for implementing any legislation in Congress to provide permanent protection to immigrants who do not have a status of immigration. The status of temporary protection is the only hope on the horizon to protect Guatemalans. Considering that Durham City recognizes the abrum of positive contributions that TPS holders have to our economy, social fabric, diversity, and the well-being of our community, and whereas TPS holders have significantly high levels of labor force participation, 94% of men and 82.1% of women are working, with 83.3% of men and 54.9% of women working more than 40 hours per week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Durham City Council argues the Executive Office of the President of the United States to act immediately to designate TPS for Guatemala, and calls on the Department of Homeland Security to grant a TPS designation for Guatemalans currently residing in the United States, a program that provides support to families fleeing uncertainty, natural disasters, and violence. Be it further resolved that this resolution to be sent to the Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security, the Secretary of the Department of State, the Office of the Vice President of the United States, the Executive Office of the President, the leaders of both the Democratic and Republican Party of the United States, Home Representatives, and of the United States Senate, and the Office of the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you to my council colleagues. It means a lot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Caballero. I do want to just be really pointed in stating that this issue with our Guatemalan brothers and sisters and folks in the community is specific, specifically tied to how white supremacy works, and just acknowledging that there are a few things in this country that I'm very ashamed of, and our immigration system is one of them. Our failure to respond equitably to folks in the community who are black and indigenous in our immigrant communities has been disgusting, and I can't stress enough how this resolution should be sent with a very strongly worded letter that speaks specifically to how the Guatemalan community has been continuously supported for their creativity, you know, continuously supported for their culture, continuously supported for their ability to provide the labor in this country and not, at the same time, slap down on, you know, just protections from, you know, just knowing that your homes have been destroyed or that there's organized crime that creates that violence in your country. And it's very clear to me that for our Central American immigrant countries, it's very different than our more Hispanic, white-passing countries, and it's very clear to me that this is, this is an issue around race that has not been touched in a way that it needs to be, and I want to make sure that I call in my black and indigenous brothers and sisters of this country to actually speak up and out against this because it's similar to that whole Standing Rock conversation. It's the same thing as, you know, a young man ringing a doorbell and ending up in the hospital. There's a reason that it happens this way, and it's not because you, you, any one of you are not human just like us. It is how white supremacy works, and I just want to thank you for coming tonight.
Councilwoman Caballero, would you like to offer the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Could we please pass the motion to accept the resolution on temporary protected status for Guatemalans?
So move. Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Caballero. It has been seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote. If you will please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, could I just say one last thing before the immunity leaves?
Yes, please.
Two things that I really want to highlight that I am extremely proud that the City of Durham spends its local dollars on is our Immigrant Legal Defense Fund that is housed through Justice Matters, and that we share a position with the county and hopefully an actual Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. And the reason that these things are important in our community is because it shows with our money, because we can pass every resolution we want, we all know that Durham is a welcoming city, we all know that we love our immigrant communities from all, from all places, but, you know, there's a saying, show me, you know, show me your budget and I'll tell you what your values are. And so that is actually one of the things that I want to say to all of our immigrant communities and refugee communities in Durham is we are showing you what our values are with our money, and I hope that we are able to do that this year. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. We now turn our attention to our public hearings, and so we will start with item 21, which is the Consolidated Annexation 4501 Glen Road. This is a zoning case, and we will now receive our staff report from Ms. Roper. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, and honorable council members. Brooke Roper with the Planning Department, happy to be here with you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law, and affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Patrick Kiernan on behalf of Matthew and Molly Minor for one parcel of land totaling approximately eight acres and located at 4501 Glen Road. This annexation petition is not contiguous to the primary corporate limits, however, is contiguous to a satellite area of the city limits. The intent of the annexation is to connect to city water and sewer and facilitate the construction of a 17-single-family residential subdivision. The property is currently designated very-low-density residential.
the leaders of both the Democratic and Republican Party of the United States Home of Representatives and of the United States Senate, and the Office of the Attorney General. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thank you to my council colleagues. It means a lot.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Cabeiro. I do want to just be really pointed in stating that this issue with our Guatemalan brothers and sisters and folks in the community is specific, specifically tied to how white supremacy works, and just acknowledging that there are a few things in this country that I'm very ashamed of, and our immigration system is one of them. Our failure to respond equitably to folks in the community who are Black and Indigenous in our immigrant communities has been disgusting. And I can't stress enough how this resolution should be sent with a very strongly worded letter that speaks specifically to how the Guatemalan community has been continuously supported for their creativity, you know, continuously supported for their culture, continuously supported for their ability to provide the labor in this country and not, at the same time, slap down on, you know, just protections from, you know, just knowing that your homes have been destroyed or that there's organized crime that creates that violence in your country. And it's very clear to me that for our Central American immigrant countries, it's very different than our more Hispanic, white-passing countries. And it's very clear to me that this is an issue around race that has not been touched in a way that it needs to be. And I want to make sure that I call in my Black and Indigenous brothers and sisters of this country to actually speak up and out against this because it's similar to that whole Standing Rock conversation. It's the same thing as, you know, a young man ringing a doorbell and ending up in the hospital. There's a reason that it happens this way, and it's not because you, any one of you, are not human just like us. It is how white supremacy works. And I just want to thank you for coming tonight.
Councilwoman Cabeiro, would you like to offer the motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Could we please pass a motion to accept the resolution on temporary protected status for Guatemalans?
The motion, second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Cabeiro. It has been seconded by Councilwoman Williams, Madam Clerk. If you would open the vote. If you will please close the vote and report out.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, could I just say one last thing before the immunity leaves? Two things that I really want to highlight that I am extremely proud that the city of Durham spends its local dollars on is our Immigrant Legal Defense Fund that is housed through Justice Matters and that we share a position with the county and hopefully an actual office of immigrant and refugee affairs. And the reason that these things are important in our community is because it shows with our money, because we can pass every resolution we want. We all know that Durham is a welcoming city. We all know that we love our immigrant communities from all places. But, you know, there's a saying, "Show me, you know, show me your budget and I'll tell you what your values are." And so that is actually one of the things that I want to say to all of our immigrant communities and refugee communities in Durham is we are showing you what our values are with our money, and I hope that we are able to do that this year. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all. We now turn our attention to our public hearings. And so we will start with Item 21, which is the Consolidated Annexation 4501 Glen Road. This is a zoning case, and we will now receive our staff report from Ms. Roper. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and honorable council members. Brooke Roper with the Planning Department, happy to be here with you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with state and local law. And affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Patrick Kiernan on behalf of Matthew and Molly Minor for one parcel of land totaling approximately eight acres and located at 4501 Glen Road. This annexation petition is not contiguous to the primary corporate limits, however, is contiguous to a satellite area of the city limits. The intent of the annexation is to connect to city water and sewer and facilitate the construction of a 17-single-family residential subdivision. The property is currently designated Very Low Density Residential on the future land use map. The proposed single-family subdivision zoning is consistent with the designated use shown on the future land use map. However, if the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommend a change to the future land use map designation from Very Low Density Residential to Low Density Residential as RS 10 already allows for four dwelling units per acre. Please note this future land use map redesignation recommendation is an update to the staff memo. As part of this annexation petition, the applicant is not seeking a change in the underlying zoning district. A direct translational zoning is one in which the existing county zoning is translated to the identical city zoning district upon the annexation of their property into city limits. A translational zoning does not include a development plan, and any future development may proceed according to what the zoning would allow. While the current use of the property is undeveloped, future development under existing zoning of Residential Suburban 10 allows for agricultural activities, residential development, and limited community services. In addition, this area is in the Falls-Jordan Lake District A Watershed Protection Overlay. The subdivision will have to meet the more stringent requirements of this critical watershed area. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance, and the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff from members of the council? Thank you all. All right, we will ask for our applicant to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and members of the City Council. My name is Patrick Kiernan from Jones &amp; Knossen Engineering in Apex. And I am here tonight representing Matthew and Molly Minor in this annexation petition for 4501 Glen Road. I'd like to start by saying thanks to Brooke Roper, Alexander Cahill, and the rest of the City of Durham Planning Department for their help throughout the staff review portion of this annexation process. This has been my first opportunity to work with the City of Durham staff members, and I've been very grateful for all their assistance along the way. As you just heard in Brooke's presentation, we are proposing to annex 4501 Glen Road into City of Durham jurisdiction to enable the development of a small 17-lot subdivision which would extend from and hopefully become a part of the Glenstone subdivision, which falls in the Ellerby Creek Protected Watershed off Glen Road. We believe the request is in keeping with the city's long-range planning as there is currently a City of Durham public street stubbed to the western property line, to which would be a requirement of our project to extend into our site. City of Durham Sanitary Sewer and Water have both been stubbed to this property line as well, creating the possibility for city utilities to extend into our project area to facilitate a future annexation. To go beyond the general reasons why we believe this is an appropriate location to request annexation, we believe that the use, product, and design have been selected in the best interest of the adjoining Glenstone neighborhood. The owners of this property, Matthew and Molly Minor, are attempting to develop the project themselves rather than to sell as they feel strongly about putting the right project in this location, and they want to remain involved with the design decisions to make sure that remains the case. The owners actually live just a few hundred yards up Glen Road. This is Matthew Minor, by the way. He's the owner of the project. But like I said, they, you know, they live right up the road, so the community that, you know, is potentially impacted by this development is his own community. And because of that, transparency has been very important to him and his wife. And, you know, I really do feel proud to help with a project that truly is attempting to keep the community in its interest front and center. If this project is ultimately approved, it is the owner's hope and intent to be absorbed into the Glenstone neighborhood by way of joining HOAs. We will be working with town staff to ensure the street aesthetics seem continuous and intentional with the existing neighborhood, and we will be providing single-family products that would be consistent with the existing neighborhood. The intent is that everything from lot size, product size, and overall style of the home would be modeled off of the existing homes. And the discussions that my client has had with the HOA thus far have been very supportive and encouraging, so we're optimistic that this merge will be possible. With that, I'll end my presentation and happily answer any questions you may have. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I didn't really prepare anything, Madam Mayor and council members, but I just wanted to say that we've been working on this for a long time, and it's something that we're, I guess, passionate about. You don't normally see a developer come in like this that lives there and also, you know, works here in Durham. So I think it's something unique, maybe, and special with this project. It's just that it's kind of Durham's own people doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you both. We do have, we will open the floor for questions from council. Councilwoman Hosea.
Hi, how are you? Good evening.
Hi.
I think you said about 17 single-family homes?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. And I know this is always a question that I hate to ask, but in terms of, like, the range of price point?
So we were discussing that earlier. That was part of the intent of really matching the style that's out there. We want to make sure that it fits, you know, it fits with the existing residences. So, you know, we're really going for very similar styles, but just new homes as opposed to, you know, the homes that were built a few decades ago. So in general, I think, you know, it was about a 15% price increase from the existing homes to these new build, and that's consistent with just the, you know, the normal new build versus existing home kind of price difference.
And I know you said you are part of the community, but I just wanted to also ask, what was the community's feel on the project? Because I know you said you've done some community engagement, and you are part of the community, so I just wanted to ask that.
Sure. So we met, I actually held like a little, like, town hall kind of gathering in the Glenstone neighborhood. We have, there's like a small gazebo that we all met at and just invited everybody to come. And there was, you know, the HOA itself, the manager and the board is very supportive and wants us to become a part. But obviously, the community members also speak into that too. And for the most part, there was, I would say, disagreement on if we should be off Glen Road, like, connect to Glen Road or not. And I think, you know, we've discussed that, and I've, there's a strong reason why it's best for the community for us not to connect to Glen Road as well, just for, through traffic and more traffic, basically. We want to try to limit traffic going through that neighborhood. Other than that, though, you know, we're going to be adding a playground. People are excited about that because right now there are no amenities besides the gazebo. So that will be open to all the kids in the whole neighborhood, as well as, I think it's about a half-acre park that we're going to be putting in as well. So...
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm sorry about that. That was a little out of order, but come to my head and not my heart. Mr. Chavis, we have two persons to speak on this matter. One online is Mr. Kenneth Fink, but we do have Mr. Chavis here, who is to speak as an opponent on this matter. Mr. Chavis, you would have three minutes. And then, Mr. Fink, we will come to you for your three minutes.
Good afternoon to the city mayor with that fine, open remarks to us early and asking us to do something great, to make Durham great. And that's why I'm up here today. I'm opposing this because, number one, we got so much problem going on with our Planning Department about this new construction, especially when it's dealing about our water and our lakes and our streams. You all don't think about the youth and what's going to happen to them when we are gone. What are the waters they're going to get? We have a water supply shortage now that y'all are overlooking. So this is not only, if you've been out to Glen Road, and I'm looking at each one of you, city councilman and mayor, I don't think any of you have really been out there and seen how it is blooming, not just coming up shortly, but coming up fast, quick, and in a hurry. And Councilman Hyman, you asked a very good question. How much is it going to cost for affordable housing out there? And he couldn't give you a price, but he'd give you a percentage. Looking at our market today, how many folks can afford to move out there? These are some of the things that we want the Planning Department, starting with us on Saturday, to be able to ask them with their outline structure of this new development part that the Planning Department and the developer has brought up. And we supposed to start it Saturday, but it got turned around. So that's another reason why I'm here, because we were supposed to start our Q and A Saturday just on with planning, answering the question of how these ordinance was going to be changed, what's the benefit and what's not the benefit. The opponents have their time and the ones that want to accept it, but we did not have that. So this is why it's going to be a continuing, just to be a Q and A for both sides to come Saturday and speak on those matters, finding out exactly what's going to be changed or added that would benefit or take away from the citizens of Durham. So I'm asking you tonight, take this in consideration as well. Do not pass this because we, the people of Durham, need to understand this more than just giving them an opportunity to put higher-priced homes where I, as a senior, and those that's making less than $50,000 can afford those houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis. Mr. Fink, if you are online, Mr. Kenneth Fink, you have the floor, sir, for three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I've met Mr. Minor, and he's a very nice gentleman. And his layout, his building, they're pretty, pretty nice homes. The only, my major concern is he hasn't really addressed the parking, not the parking, but the traffic problems that this is going to incur on Chimney Stone. Chimney Stone right now is a dead-end street, and it has parking on both sides. It's a narrow street. There's just over 20 homes on it now, and this is going to double, almost double the amount of traffic that's going to, the street's going to incur. So I really think it's going to, it's going to be a bit of a safety hazard. We have a lot of young families in the neighborhood, and even more have moved there in the last few years. So I don't know, with the people that are going to be living on this new development, I, they're going to, the only way they're going to bail to get out onto Glen Road is going to go through our subdivision, meaning Chimney Stone to Glenstone Road and then exit out to Glen Road. And I don't know, I was hoping that he was going to put an entrance off of Glen Road so that these new residents would have an easy access to get in and out of their development. And obviously, he's not in favor of that. And I would just wish he would address the increased traffic flow that is going to happen on Chimney Stone. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. I now turn back to Mr. Kerman and Mr. Minor. And I also will ask you to fill out those speaker cards once you're done, but you will have time for rebuttal at this point if you'd like to do so.
I can talk first about Mr. Chavis. Thank you, sir, for sharing, you know, your concerns. And, you know, I've felt it too. You know, I've been here not my whole life. I can't claim that, but I've been here, you know, for about 10 years, since about 2014, and have, you know, felt also the price increase of homes. And I work in real estate. I'm a real estate agent, so I see it all the time. And it's, it can get out of control for sure. So what we're doing is we're not, we're not going to be building homes that are made for, you know, that are like, because we could, there's options, you know. When you're doing a development, you can kind of do whatever, you know, as long as, you know, within the rules and everything, you know, agrees. But we're not. We're going to be building homes like kind, just like in Glenstone. My goal is for it to be a seamless transition down Chimney Stone so you feel like you're in the same neighborhood. It doesn't feel like an area that's like, you know, better. I want it, I want it to be very seamless. And then the price point is really based off, I mean, it's really hard for me to put an exact number on something that we're so far off from building because of the price of building. So it's hard to know exactly what things are going to cost. But I will promise you that it's not going to be something, you know, it's going to be in line with everything that's normal. So right now, for example, the last six months of Glenstone comps, which are the recent sales in the Glenstone subdivision, are what we're using. So these are homes that sold in 2000, you know, that sold in 2023, just the last couple of months. And these are homes that are already selling, and these are already comps that kind of represent the price of that neighborhood. We're going right along with that. In fact, the price per square foot that I used to give, to kind of do my own numbers, I just used the same price per square foot that they sold at. I didn't even add the 15%. 15%, you know, obviously, if you're buying something that's built in 2023 versus 20, you know, 2008, it's newer construction, and everything's new, the roof, the HVAC, and it's going to sell more. That's just, you know, how the market goes. But we're not, we're not, we're not going to be like doing big upgrades or making like 3,000-square-foot homes. We're doing homes that are the same size as the homes that exist in Glenstone. And they're going to look the same from the outside. They're going to have the same kind of architectural details and the same. So that's, that's, that's my goal. I mean, that's what I'm, that's what, that's what we're doing. So I hope that addresses it and relays some of your concerns. And for, I didn't get his last name, but Mr.?
I can take this one.
Mr. Fink? Okay, I'll let, I'll let you take it.
So, Mr. Fink, I appreciate your concerns. And it's a great question. And actually, you know, the way that we have been viewing it is really kind of the opposite in the sense that there was initial discussions to possibly create the entrance off of Glen Road. However, the street stub, the chimney stone, Stone Chimney street stub is there. And we talked to the Transportation Department about, would it be possible to leave that as a dead-end street stub and only come off of Glen Road and have sort of a isolated subdivision separate from Glenstone? That was a possibility. And it, sorry, that was not a possibility from the city's, city Transportation Department just because the street stub was there. So the fact remained that the street stub was going to be extended. So then the question was, do we connect to Glen Road and create an additional cut-through for the neighborhood, which we thought would increase traffic along Stone Chimney? So for us to extend it into another cul-de-sac, you know, we're looking at it as a low impact with the 17 new homes versus, there was also a conversation about, should this go mixed residential and introduce townhomes in higher density? But due to the critical watershed and just the desire to have a low-impact development, we didn't want to create more additional traffic than kind of what would be inherent in just extending Chimney Stone. Stone Chimney, sorry. Is it Chimney Stone? Okay, sorry. Anyway, that's, that's my rebuttal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I believe those are all the speakers that we have signed up for tonight. Looking in our clerk for confirmation for this item.
Yes, Madam Mayor, those are all the individuals who signed up. We do have two people in the queue with their hands up. I didn't know if you wanted them to speak or not.
Trying to pull it up. Mr. Rush, last name is Furnas, and Mr. Baric. Mr. Baric, you have your hand raised. Mr. Furnas, Mr. Baric, let's, Baric, let's start with you. Are you speaking for or against this particular item?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hello, council. Yeah, I guess I'm kind of speaking against, I'd say. I guess I have some questions about who, you know, these homes will be sold to, you know. you know, uh, I guess my, my hope would be that it would be, you know, maybe there could be some sort of promise by the developers that, you know, this would be, you know, to kind of, uh, to families and maybe not, you know, uh, like developers that would want to come in and, and, you know, rent out the houses, but, you know, come into people who are also gonna, you know, buy the houses and, and, you know, take care of their lots and that kind of thing. Uh, Ken, uh, Fink kind of, uh, touched on my other concern as far as just like traffic and, um, you know, a lot of cars park on the side of the road, um, in, in this neighborhood and, and lots of times the, the sidewalk kind of goes over people's driveways and typically people will kind of park over the sidewalks. So lots of times when you're walking around like with your dog or with your families and stuff, um, you're kind of forced to go into the street, um, as you're walking around, kind of to walk around people's cars and things like that. Um, and then with a car on the street, it, there's kind of, you know, space for like one person to kind of walk through. So it just kind, it gets kind of, kind of hairy as far as traffic, so, um, I guess I'm, I'm generally opposed to it, but, uh, just kind of wondering what the developers thought about, um, selling it to, to families and not, um, you know, people who are gonna come in and, and, you know, buy them all out and, and rent out the homes. That's it, thank you.
Right, thank you for your comments tonight, sir. We will now turn to Mr. Furness. Mr. Furness, are you speaking for or against? You would have about three minutes, sir, and if you would let us know whether you are speaking for or against this action item.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, no, that's fine. Um, hi, Madam Mayor and, um, fellow council members, um, I just, it is Mrs. Rashaki Furness. I am also a neighbor, um, to the two gentlemen that just spoke, um, as well as Matt Minor. I am, I guess if I have to declare aside, I would say opposed simply because of, um, what Mr. Fink already spoke about, the traffic safety. We are all at that dead end, um, that was spoken about on Chimney Stone. And, um, I'm also a member of the Glenstone HOA Board, and I can speak to the fact that, um, a lot of folks in the community are really concerned about traffic safety. We have autistic families in this community. Um, we, you know, I heard what Patrick said, um, in regards to his rebuttal, but I didn't hear, you know, what consideration was taken once we, he, they did hear from the community our concerns regarding, um, the entryway to the, the new subdivision coming off of Glen Road. Is there a, you know, I'd like to know, is there a reason why, you know, we can't do that? He, he said there was a reason why they preferred to do it another way, but now hearing the, you know, the concerns of the community, has there been any further consideration towards not having the entryway go through this very narrow street, um, where there are children in the community and again autistic, uh, uh, families in the community? Um, it, it's a real safety concern. It's a real safety concern and it's, and it's not just a handful of folks in the community that are concerned about it, and I can speak to that because I do serve on the board. So I think, um, I, I'm, I'm for the development. Um, I think Matt's approach, uh, with keeping, you know, maintaining the, um, the size of the homes, being pretty consistent with, with already in the community, as well as working with the board to, um, do some type of, you know, playground or something of that nature. I think that's great, uh, but I, I, I just, we really want to express our concerns about the traffic safety. That's it.
Thank you, and I'd like to, um, ask if our applicant would have a response. Uh, I just want to remind the general public who are at home that our process requires that we give time, um, equal time to both sides. And it is important that we try to adhere and, and would urge our, um, folks who are at home on the internet to please, 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 please sign up to speak, um, before 2 o'clock, I believe. I'll ask our clerk to give you that information, uh, but it is important because we are mandated to keep time equally. And if you come to the meeting and I know you want to speak, it throws off kind of how we're trying to keep track of things. So if you can, um, uh, please remind all your neighbors, all your friends, that if you would like to speak, um, during a hearing, uh, a public hearing, if you would please, and you're gonna do it from at home, which we encourage, that you please, please, please sign up before the 2 o'clock hour, the day of the meeting. I did allow, um, for Mr. Fink, I'm sorry, yeah, for, uh, the last two persons to speak, but you had not signed up, so I'm being generous tonight, but please, uh, it causes, it throws things off. So now I will turn back for further rebuttal and will ask our clerk to give them time to equal things out.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess first to address Mr. Fink's, um, question, I would tell you my intention would not be to want to sell it to anybody who's gonna rent the properties out. I live in this neighborhood, you know, in this area as well, and also don't, you know, prefer people who, who, who will be owning these homes around you guys, because, um, I know you, you guys own your homes and, and there's some sense of stability that comes along with that, that you appreciate. But I will say that I don't have control over, um, there are fair housing laws that, you know, obviously we all need to follow in terms of choosing, uh, you know, a specific buyer based on family status. Um, and family is one of the, um, you know, protected areas that, you know, you can't really choose who you're gonna pick based on their family status, so, um, I'm not sure if that answers it, but, you know, I, we, I, I, I share your feelings though about, about, you know, not making it like a big rental cul-de-sac or something like that.
Thank you so much.
And then I was gonna, um, just for Rashaki, um, I, I also hear your concerns and, um, I would say, um, if you thi, thinking through this, you know, I, I, I am, right now Glenstone is a primary thoroughfare that exits out to Glen and, and, and then there's, there's one other, I forgot the name of that street, but there's only two entrances to this neighborhood that has 210 houses currently. So, so we're adding 17 more, um, on, you know, on the end of Chimney Stone. And if we made a third thoroughfare that connected to Glen, I think you're gonna find that actually there's a lot more traffic that's gonna end up coming down that way, who want to end up going, um, north on Glen, they would take Chimney Stone to get out because it's, you know, it's closer and quicker. So instead of just the residents using that street, um, that was, that was our reasoning for it, um, because, you know, you're right, there, there are kids and my kids ride their bikes in that neighborhood too, and, um, obviously, you know, I want everybody to be safe, so I hope that, that answers your question, thank you.
All right, thank you all. I, I will now declare the public hearing to be closed and this matter is back before the council. Uh, and there, are there any questions or comments from council? Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thank you, um, for bringing this application, um, and thank you to the neighbors and community members who've spoken. Um, we have, let me for, let me start this comment off with, we can't force you to do anything, um, but we do have a housing crisis and anytime there's someone that's willing to contribute to helping us solve that, I appreciate it. We also can't force you to make anything affordable or can't dictate your pricing structure. I appreciate you explaining the, um, the feasibility of a building. What I would like to, uh, see if you would consider, not everything we build can be affordable, and I'll say that any day. However, everything we build in the culture that we're trying to promote here, um, there, I, I'd love to see some contribution to some factor of affordability. So it may not be you building your unit, but contributing to something around that. So I'm not saying my vote is based on that, I'm just saying you're, you're, you're a Durham guy and as you're building and helping us contribute to this housing crisis and this affordability crisis, uh, have you considered any factor of, um, the multiple avenues in which we, uh, try to address affordability in Durham? And that could be from building a unit to donating to the Affordable Housing Loan Fund to whatever.
I'm not certain of all the avenues that are available to developers to help with that, but I would be open to that for sure.
Yeah.
And part of this might be, you know, some of my inexperience with Durham, um, you know, this being an annexation, um, rather than, say, like a conditional zoning or something that I'm used to, where you have the opportunity to, um, add certain conditions to accompany the annexation or zoning. I didn't know if that was something that we had the opportunity to do with this annexation. Um, so we didn't have the conversation necessarily of, you know, donating a percentage of the homes to, uh, 80 or 100% AMI or something to that effect, or donating it into an affordability fund. Um, you know, whether or not Matt is willing to do that, you know, I, I would love the opportunity to have that discussion. Um, uh, you know, I would, I would hate for the vote to, um, be influenced one way or another if we didn't, if, if he didn't know that he had the opportunity to do so, if that makes sense.
Considering that comment, I want to clarify, because it's illegal for us to force you to do that, so I'm not saying that the vote is weighted on that.
Sure.
It's just that, that is part of the culture that we promote in Durham.
I guess.
Not in a formal way, but.
Um, yeah, I guess the best we could say right now is that we will definitely entertain, you know, definitely look into it, uh, if, if granted the approval here tonight.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council?
I think our planning director was gonna address that very question so that they knew clearly how they could contribute if they'd like.
Yes, just as a reminder, the applicant is correct, this does not have a development plan, it's just a translational initial zoning, and so there is not a mechanism to proffer or commit to something, although we, um, certainly will work with people if they would like to do that, um, aside from that mechanism.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say that this, um, particular site, because it's a satellite location and it's a sensitive area, uh, this makes sense, um, just noting that the 17 additional on that stub, I know that folks may not like having additional homes on that end, but I do think that the not opening it up to Glen, Glen Road is, I've been in this area quite a bit. Um, opening it up to Glen Road would prevent as much traffic, just cutting, cutting through because there is traffic on Glen Road. And so, um, I do think that the stub is, is, is the right way to go. I do think that the 17 homes is a lot, but I can man, I can bear with that. Um, I am concerned about the pricing, just acknowledging that it's not gonna be affordable housing at all, it's gonna be market rate and whatever the market will bear, um, because that'll be, it'll be very competitive to get into that community, it's already established. Um, this is not the, this is not the space to do affordable housing, but it is a, a space to, um, build out our, our road structure, and so I would be supportive of this moving forward. I will say that, um, it's, it's mainly because it's in that Jordan Lake watershed and you're offering a low density, um, project, it's, it's more the reason why I'm supportive of it than not. That's all, thank you.
Any other comments from council? All right. Colleagues, we have three motions for your consideration this evening in regards to this item, agenda item. Motion number one is to adopt an ordinance annexing 4501 Glen Road into the City of Durham effective June 30th of 2023 and to authorize the city manager to enter into a utility extension agreement with Matthew and Molly Monner.
The move?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Uh, Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes five to one with Councilmember Holsey Hyman voting no.
The second motion for our consideration is motion, uh, is to adopt an ordinance admitting the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the Residential Suburban Dash 10 RS Dash 10 Falls slash Jordan District AF Slash J Dash A County Jurisdiction and establishing the same as Residential Suburban 10 RS Dash 10 Falls slash Jordan District AF Slash J Dash A City Jurisdiction.
The move?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Council, uh, Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote. And report out, please.
And the motion passes five to one with Councilmember Holsey Hyman voting no.
The third motion for our consideration is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160 D Dash 605.
The move?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Williams, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote and report out.
And the motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We are going to, uh, take a 10 minute recess for our closed captioning, uh, audience, uh, folks who are providing closed, uh, captioning will come back in, but I do want to address one thing before that do, we do that. We have a, a deja de naixée coffee on the, uh, internet, I believe, and there is no agenda item assigned, um, to the item that you want to speak to, Ms. Coffee. If you are just speaking i- in general, I see you're a social work student, if you're not, ha, don't have an agenda item, she's not, no longer there? All right, thank you. All right, we're staying in recess for 10 minutes, thank you.
Here's some tips to ensure that your garbage and recycling gets picked up. One, your carts should be put out for collection before 6:00 AM on your collection day. Two, your carts should be at least three feet from all other objects such as mailboxes, telephone poles, fire hydrants, trees and other carts. Three, your carts should be no more than three feet from the curb. Four, no vehicles should be blocking your carts. The mechanical arms on our trucks need direct access to your carts and cannot reach around vehicles. To find more information about garbage and recycling.
There's no place like home. Home is where the heart is.
Hey, can I help you?
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
It is our place of safety and warmth. Home is where love resides, memories are created, and laughter warms the heart. That's why the Durham Human Relations Division is committed to enforcing the Fair Housing Act, which prohibits unlawful discrimination based on race, color, disability, religion, sex, familial status, or national origin.
All right, everybody. Okay, we're now coming back in session. And we will now take a, a look at item 22, which is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Improving Access to Walkability. This is a public hearing, and we will hear from our staff. Ms. Roper? Ms. Roper?
Apologies.
Oh, that's okay.
Brooke Roper with the City County Planning Department. The Improving Access and Walkability Text Amendment TC 21/07 is a change to the Unified Development Ordinance initiated by Planning Commission with the goal of making a more connected community. The Durham Planning Commission initiated the amendment during the summer of 2021 and formed a subcommittee to put a draft amendment forward. At the July 2021 Planning Commission meeting, commissioners unanimously passed a resolution to initiate what was formerly called the Block Length Text Amendment. Over 2022, planning staff have carried out research to create a draft amendment that has gone through numerous revisions by other city and county staff, along with members of the Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. The draft was also shared with the Growth Management Social Pinpoint Site for a two-month-long engagement period, which was followed by further amendment adjustments based on what was heard. The engagement summary may be seen in attachment C. To achieve the goal of making a more connected community, the amendment proposes various rules for developers which would limit the length of streets and promote more pedestrian connections to nearby existing networks. The amendment includes updates to the existing connectivity ratio, which is the street lengths divided by nodes. That ensures developers are providing sufficient road and pedestrian networks within new developments and adequately connecting to adjacent areas. The amendment also includes a new block length component, which limits the allowed length of the streets or street blocks that developers can build to help ensure our communities are built to human scale, closely connected, and walkable. The final draft was presented to JCCPC on February 1, 2023, where they unanimously agreed to send it forward through the public hearing process. At the February 28 Planning Commission meeting, the commission recommended approval by a vote of 12 to 0. Two motions are before you tonight. The first is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, incorporating revisions to Article 12, 13, 15, and 17, effective June 1, 2023. The second motion is to adopt the appropriate consistency statement. Thank you. Staff are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Roper. You've heard the report from Ms. Roper, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for Ms. Roper or staff or members of the council? Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you. I just wanted to just take a moment and thank our planning commission for taking the initiative to address this text amendment and just say that I think it looks great and I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on this end? Thank you all so much. We have one person online to speak as a proponent tonight, and that will be Mr. John Talmadge. Mr. Talmadge, you have the floor and you have three minutes, sir.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir, we are. We can hear you. Mr. Talmadge, can you hear me? We can hear you, sir. Or we did hear you. Mr. Talmadge, could you see if you can unmute yourself, sir? Do you see him still on the, he's gone? All right. I will now declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter is now back before council. If there are any questions?
Not really. I'm sorry.
No comments? Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. I just appreciate this as well. It aligns with some of the comments shared at a recent press conference around just trying to do street safety differently. As I stated then, that our roads and highways have served rural North Carolina and suburban North Carolina very well. And now it's time for our needs, as our needs are evolving in urban areas, it's time for our transportation to do so as well. And I just appreciate, not only we're talking about it, but being about it in the city of Durham. So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Caballero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say that I was happy to see this on our agenda this evening and also just to, Mr. John Talmadge was on earlier, and I just wanted to thank him for sending us the petition signers. There were 358 individuals who signed in support of the walkability amendment that was sent to us by Bike Durham, and I just wanted to acknowledge that since he was not able to make any comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right. Colleagues, we have two motions for your consideration for this item. The first motion is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, incorporating revisions to Article 12, Infrastructure and Public Improvements, Article 13, Additional Requirements for Subdivisions, Article 15, Enforcement in Article 17, Definitions, Effective June 1, 2023.
The move?
The move? Second.
The move by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Holsey Hyman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote? If you will close the vote and report out, please.
The motion passes six, zero.
The second motion for our consideration is to adopt the appropriate consistency statement as required per NCGS 160D dash 605.
The move?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Holsey Hyman, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote? If you will close the vote and report out, please.
And the motion passes six, zero.
Thank you. We now turn our attention to item number 23, which is also a public hearing, a zoning, public hearing, excuse me, and that is the Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Regarding Pet Waste Receptacles. And we will hear from staff at this time.
Good evening, y'all. Hold on just a moment. I've hidden my script. Won't go very well if I do that. Good evening. My name is Jessica Dockery. I'm a planning manager with the Durham City County Planning Department. This evening I am presenting information about a proposed Unified Development Ordinance Text Amendment Case DTC 22/06, which was initiated by staff from several city departments working on the implementation of a total maximum daily loads, or TMDL, response plan completed in 2019. This was heard by the JCCPC at their February 1 meeting and by the Planning Commission at their March 14 meeting with a unanimous recommendation for approval. As development continues in Durham, runoff from impervious surfaces washes pollutants such as pet waste, which can cause bacterial contamination from fecal coliform bacteria, and sediment, which causes turbidity in water bodies. These pollutants end up in the drinking water supply, so TMDLs have been established to ensure safe levels. When TMDLs are exceeded, plans to reduce those are necessary. Durham County bodies of water of particular concern are Northeast Creek and Third Fork Creek. Northeast Creek is impaired due to excessive fecal coliform bacteria from the digestive systems of warm-blooded animals, which does include pets. Third Fork Creek is impaired by high levels of turbidity caused primarily by erosion in streams and due to earth-moving activities. The city of Durham completed a TMDL response plan in 2019 that focuses specifically on TMDLs in Third Fork and Northeast Creeks. However, TMDLs affect the many water bodies throughout the county. The proposed requirements for pet waste receptacles will assist with implementation of the Northeast Creek Watershed Improvement Plan, efforts to address fecal coliform bacteria, while also protecting other watersheds from similar bacterial contamination. The primary sections of the Unified Development Ordinance that will be affected by this text amendment are Articles 7 and 9. Article 7 includes design standards for open space and residential developments, as well as standards for utility and solid waste collection facilities in all developments. These standards will be revised to require pet waste receptacles at the trailheads of all greenways and trails for new development. The Solid Waste Collection Facility section in this article will be the most significantly altered to require pet waste receptacles to be installed in residential developments in an effort to lower the amount of fecal coliform bacteria and runoff. Article 9 includes standards for landscaping and buffering, including screening requirements for solid waste collection facilities. Pet waste receptacles will be exempt from the screening requirement. The most extensive change to the UDOT text is shown here. Pet waste receptacles will need to be placed on homeowner association-owned land in open space areas. At least two receptacles shall be provided for developments with 90 or fewer dwelling units, and for developments with 91 or more units, at least three shall be provided. The receptacles will be maintained and emptied by the HOA per open space maintenance agreements established in the HOA agreements, which must be recorded for site plan approval. Thank you, and staff is available if there are any questions.
Thank you so much. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. First, are there any questions for staff or members of the council? Councilwoman Freeman?
Just a request to share those slides specifically. That's all.
Any other questions from the council? I don't believe we have any speakers for this particular item. Therefore, I will now declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter is back before the council. Are there any other comments or questions regarding this item? All right, we have two motions for your consideration, colleagues. The first is a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Durham Unified Development Ordinance, incorporating revisions to Article 7, design standards, and Article 9, landscaping and buffering, effective May 1, 2023.
The move?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Holsey Hyman, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote? If you will close the vote and report out.
The motion passes unanimously.
The second motion for our consideration is to adopt the appropriate consistency statement as required per NCGS 160D dash 605.
The move?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Holsey Hyman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote? If you will also close the vote and report out.
And the second motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. We will now turn our attention to item 24, which is also a public, this public hearing is also a zoning case, which is the revisions to the Durham City Code, Section 70, that's 736 through 70, that's 744, stormwater performance standards for development, and we will receive the staff report at this time.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor O'Neill and Council. I am Akin Aknola of the Public Works Department. This item proposes to amend the city stormwater ordinance to comply with the re-adapted News Nutrient Strategy. The re-adapted News Nutrient Strategy, effective April 1, 2020, required the city to submit a draft local program demonstrating compliance for approval by the Environmental Management Commission. Durham's News Draft Local Program Durham's News Draft Local Program was submitted to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality on September 10, 2021, was approved by the Environmental Management Commission on September 8, 2022, and the city was formally notified of approval on November 1, 2022. With this approval, the city is mandated to adopt the News Local Program within six months, no later than May 1, 2023. This public hearing was noticed in accordance with state and local requirements. There are two motions that the administration recommends that the city council approve. The first is to conduct the public hearing to receive public comments on proposed revisions to Durham City Code, Section 70-D-736 through 70-D-744. The second is to adopt an ordinance amending the Durham City Code, Section 70-736 through 70-D-744, stormwater performance standards for development. Thank you very much. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you so much. You have heard the report from staff, and I'm now going to declare this public hearing open. Are there any questions for staff or members of the council? Councilwoman Freeman.
Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to encourage the engagement of the NIS with the public... Essentially, just making sure they're engaged and they know that those comments will be requested from the community.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I do not believe we have any speakers for this particular item. All right, thank you. I will now declare the public hearing to be closed, and the matter is back before the council. Are there any comments or questions from the council at this point? All right, we have two motions for our consideration, colleagues. The first is to conduct the public hearing to receive public comment on proposed revisions to Durham City Code, Section 70-D-736 through 70-D-744. Move?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will close the vote, please, and report out.
And the motion passes 6 to 0.
The second motion for our consideration is to adopt an ordinance amending the Durham City Code, Section 70 through... D-736 through 70-D-744, stormwater performance standards for development.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Williams, seconded by Councilwoman Freeman. Madam Clerk, if you will open the vote. If you will, please close the vote and report out.
And the second motion passes 6-0.
Thank you so much. We will now turn our attention to the pulled item by Councilwoman Freeman, which is the Durham item number 6, the Durham Planning Commission Department. You have the floor, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to raise up the concern that the council appointment is a resident of Cary, and I wanted to just note that there were a number of applicants who actually live in the city of Durham, and I wasn't quite sure if the work address was in RTP rather than in the city of Durham, but I would like to get verification of that because I do believe that you're supposed to be a city resident or work within the city limits.
Councilmember Freeman, we just looked up the address that was listed on the application, and it is new construction, and it is located within the city of Durham.
Thank you.
All right, here's a motion for this particular item. So move?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Williams and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. Madam Clerk, if you would open the vote. And if you will close the vote. And report out.
The motion passes 6 to 0.
Thank you all so much. I believe that we have come to the end of our agenda. Are there any other matters to come before the council? Councilwoman Williams.
Real quick, Mayor, again, when Councilmember Freeman was talking earlier about her being on the Women's Commission for... It's the national and state, or is it... It's both, right?
So the North Carolina... Oh goodness, League of Municipalities Annual Meeting, well, Annual Convention is also next week, and within that, the North Carolina Women and Municipal Government will be meeting as well.
Great. So I just wanted to highlight how Durham is really impacting the state of North Carolina and the league. For those who don't know, really has a lot of impact on how the General Assembly views our state, and Mayor Proton Middleton, next week at the convention will be installed as the first vice president. You've heard Councilmember Freeman's position, and Councilmember Monique Jose Hyman is our National Regional Director, and I also sit on the Board of Directors for the League for North Carolina as well. So Durham is overwhelmingly represented in how we affect the state of North Carolina. So I just wanted to highlight that.
If I could add to that, I also serve on the federal advocacy for transportation infrastructure, and then also on the racial equity and leadership.
All of that.
Thank you, colleagues. Are there any further announcements tonight?
Just one question regarding our Day of Remembrance. I just want to get a thumbs up on moving forward from folks about making sure that we can get that on the agenda for Monday, well, for May 1st, so that we can get it passed before the 15th.
Thumbs up, not thumbs up? All right, anything further? You sure? Okay. All righty. I just want to remind everybody that I will be traveling to a conference tomorrow, so I will not be with you at the work session. Councilwoman Johnson will be leading that meeting, and we will see you all in a couple of weeks. Also know that peace is a lifestyle. We'll city strong. We are hereby adjourned at 9:55 on Monday, April 17. Have a good, great week, everybody.